First of all, I would like to welcome the Secretary for Security and his colleagues. I'll ask the Secretary for Security to say a few words before I invite questions from members. This session will last from 3:50 to 5:50 P M. Chairman, in the draft estimate for the new financial year 2013-14, the allocation on the security policy area group is $36.6 billion, representing 8.3% of total government expenditure. The two policy areas of internal security and immigration control under my responsibility will account for $41.1 billion. Law and Order, the overall law and order situation in Hong Kong remains stable in 2012. The overall crime figure was about the same level as in 2011, whilst the violent crime figures register a decrease of 2.1% as compared with 2011. Most category of crimes such as robberies, blackmail, burglaries, thefts, criminal intimidation, wounding, a serious assault as well as missing motor vehicles also decrease in number. The police will always remain alert to maintain the law and order of our society. The major operational targets of the Commissioner's Police for 2013 are to combat violent crimes, riot syndicated crimes, dangerous drugs, and so on. The police will also create 45 new posts for addressing the policing needs in ChongKong or Kaitai areas and driving the sexual conviction record check scheme. To maintain Hong Kong status and international trade and tourism hub, the Immigration Department has all along strived to provide smooth and effective immigration care and service. The number of visitors arriving in Hong Kong has continued to grow over the past few years. In 2012, the total number of visitor arrival reached 48.6 million, representing a 16% increase from 2011. Immigration Department has adopted a series of measures to cope with the depressed central traffic in 2013-14 financial year. There will be a net increase of 154 posts in Immigration Department, among which 116 will be deployed for carrying out immigration control and related duties at new and existing control points. We'll commence recruiting suitable candidates for these new posts and will provide suitable training for them with a view to help having them deploy to control points as soon as possible to relieve the manpower pressure thereat. Immigration Department has always strived to increase the handling capacity and efficiency through strengthening its e-channel service. Since the introduction of main and frequent visitor of email e-channel service, the usage rates were satisfactory in that a number of user has accounted for more than 20% of all main and visitors. To further alleviate the pressure at boundary control points, we'll increase the number of visitors, e-channels available for use by main and visitor to 100 within this year. On the other hand, the handling capacity of Lot Marcha and Menkamto Control Point will increase upon completion of improvement works within the current year. Immigration Department will flexibly deploy staff resources due to rising cross-boundary vehicles. We'll continue to provide assistance to Hong Kong residents in distress outside Hong Kong. We review the old coverage of outbound travel alert system substantially. With effect from the 30th of November 2013, we have also issued OTA information via the Gov-Hong Kong notifications, mobile platform, so that the public can conveniently receive relevant information via smartphones. On fire safety, F S D will continue with provide 165 additional posts in the new financial year. One of these, 111, are tied to the commissioning of a new fire safety at ChangYip Street in Karun Bay. And there will be 54 posts for five ambulance ships to enhance emergency ambulance service. To ensure the safety of frontline personnel, F S D would replace air services and ambulance equipment in a timely manner. In 2013 and 14, the expenses on procurement on fire appliances and vessels and major equipment will be around $300 million. The F S D will continue to roll out pilot schemes on reduction of weekly condition hours to reduce the number of hours from 54 to 51. The department will ensure that the reduction arrangement will not affect the firefighting and rescue services. The C S D has been implementing various measures and officers need to conduct searches on persons in custody to prevent the possession of contract bans such as drugs and weapons. Last year, the department put the low radiation X-ray body scanner into use at the Lai Chi Coe Reception Center to replace manual rectal searches. Because of the satisfactory outcome, the department plans to install one X-ray body scanner each in Pickok, Lo Wu, and Tai Tam Center for Women in 2013 and 14. To ensure that that is effective monitoring on whether some rehabilitated persons have relapsed into drugs when they are reintegrated into society, C S D will collect urine specimen for testing. To strengthen the integrity of the urine specimen testing arrangement, C S D will set up a urine specimen collection center next to the Lai Chi Coe Reception Center this year. The urine sample will be collected and processed by staff outside the rehabilitation division to minimize any possible conflict of interest. Besides, CCTV will be installed in the center to record and monitor the testing process. Competing drug abuse problem. The government has injected new resources to support any drug initiatives in different areas. In 2013 and 14, they have stability withstand the enhanced pro-patient service territory-wide to all seven magistrate courts through more focused intensive and structural testing treatment programs. The E P S will continue to help young offenders under the age of 21 convicted of drug-related offenses to turn a new leaf. These are my opening remarks. I'm happy to take questions from members. Fourteen members have pressed the button to raise questions. For those who haven't done so, please press the button now. Mr. Shin Chung Kai, I have follow-up questions about S P 042054 and 095 concerning the pepper spray, the use of pepper spray by the police. The answer looks like this. The number, the quantity, the of pepper spray canisters, the quantity of procurement, the quantity of consumption over expenses, and so on and so forth should not be disclosed because it would be inappropriate to disclose the information. By holding back such information, would you be giving people the impression that you have large quantities of such canisters and you adopt a high-handed approach in handling protesters in public protest? Secretary?
Well, the police may need to use such pepper spray canisters on various occasions. In public protests and assemblies, when it becomes necessary to stop breaches of the law or violence, they may have to resort to the use of pepper spray. But the number is low. Since this is an important tool employed by the police to prevent crime, therefore the total quantities and so on and so forth, well, if they are disclosed... And here, we're not talking about protesters. If such information is known to unlawful elements, it would affect law enforcement capabilities of the police. Therefore, it would be inappropriate for the police to disclose figures of these equipment. What's the difference between 1,000 and 2,000 pepper spray canisters to the public? Are you being transparent and accountable? Are you holding back information from the public? Secretary, I do agree with Mr. Shin that we are trying to hide something from the public. Chairman, three members asked about the numbers and the police refuses to disclose the figures. Are you still, are you trying to answer questions from this committee or not? While the police has already explained why it would be inappropriate to disclose the information. Mr. Shin Chung Kai, Secretary, can you explain in detail the reasons for the non-disclosure? Secretary, as I said in my first reply, I've already explained the reasons. I couldn't hear you. Can you do it again? Can you repeat the answer again? I have more than a minute for you to explain. Chairman, the police use pepper spray, just like the other police equipment that frontline officers use, is used to discharge their duties and it will be used only when necessary. The use of pepper spray is not solely for the purpose of controlling the conflicts or confrontation in public protests. Actually, on many different occasions, the police may need to protect the victim or to stop serious crime. The police officer may use pepper spray because pepper spray is effective and is simple to use and the person being sprayed on will suffer the minimal risk. So the use of pepper spray by police officers is not just about public protest. Actually, they are used more frequently, the pepper spray is used more frequently on other occasions. Mr. Gary Fan, I want to talk about S P 054, 055, 056, 057 concerning the number of barricades and water barricades and pepper spray canisters. And the answer is inappropriate by the secretary, is inappropriate. Why do we want to ask questions about pepper spray canisters and water barriers? Well, some children were sprayed in some public protests and sometimes there was no prior warning and sometimes it was used in a distance which is not safe.
So if the police will use the pepper spray as a harm-causing weapon, the legislature has the responsibility to get all the details. Since you did not answer the question, I'm of the view that you, Mr. Zhang, is viewing the police force under your command as an independent kingdom that cannot be monitored by the public and the legislature. I do not find this acceptable. I'd like to refer now to question 058, which has to do with the expenditures for overseas duty visits made by the C P in the four years from 2008 to 2013, especially in terms of hotel accommodation. There has been a 100% increase in 2011, 2012. However, if we look at the number of entourage days, they are more or less the same. I'd like to know why. Is it because you have gone into hotels and booked presidential suites? I'd like to know the details of your duty visits. The next question is S P 060. It's about ChongKong Old Police Station. It says that in 2013, the police force is planning to create 39 police officer posts in 2013-14. I'd like to know when the ChongKong Old Division will become an independent police district.
I'll answer the first question first. I cannot identify with Mr. Fan that the police force is an independent kingdom. We are a neutral department and we act according to the law. The pepper spray is not a weapon with a lot of harm-causing capacity. We will always give an oral warning first or we will hold up a placard to warn the targets and it is only after doing that will we use pepper spray and I will also ask for a report. The next two questions, C P. After I've assumed office, I have conducted duty visits in the last two years. Sometimes I attended meetings or conferences and sometimes to sign agreements for cooperation between police forces of the two places. Sometimes I attended seminars. I went to different places in the two years. I had different people accompanying me and also the number of days were different. That is why the expenses were different. But let me tell you the principles. All the expenses follow the relevant regulations of the government. I'd like to say also that within the police force, we will only spend where money should be spent. If there are no special reasons, we will only go for economy seats on the plane, regardless of the length of the journey. For myself, apart from long-haul journeys, together with my colleagues, I will also use economy seats. And also, we'll just go for the general guest rooms. We never ask for suites. You will understand that, of course, the number of entourage members may be different and reasons for the visit and number of days will be different. And I can give you an example. If we go to Europe, very often the hotels are really expensive. When the hotels are expensive, if we are only talking about guest rooms, it may cost you 300 euros a night and that is why the expenses are inflated. There is another principle within my term. Sorry, C P, can you give me all the details after the meeting? Let me just talk about one principle. No, you have, you stopped my time and you have to answer my third question. Please just allow me to say one more thing. Okay, let's do this. C P, please answer the third question and also the remaining part of the second question in writing. Next member, Wong Kwok Hing.
I'm a legislator from Hong Kong Island. At the beginning of the year, I have been attending activities and residence committees. I have heard from many residents that at the beginning of the year, there was the muting of this Occupy Central campaign and they said that they were extremely worried. I'd like to refer to question S P 037, which is on marches and gatherings and protests. I'd like to ask a follow-up question of the Secretary or the C P. There are two academics and also one person from a religious body who are championing this Occupy Central campaign. They are organized and they are also creating public opinion. This is a declaration to Occupy Central. They are using this word Occupy. If they really do it, it is going to be a serious thing. If that's the case, they can become the Secretary for Security and also the C P. If they really Occupy Central, what are you going to do? It is an open contravention of the law. They are depriving people's freedom to go into and out of Central. They will be paralyzing Central, which is the financial center of Hong Kong. Also, public order and public peace will be damaged. Recently, we have seen negative reaction to this. Some financial institutions with their headquarters in Central, they've said that they might withdraw from Hong Kong. And some multinationals, as reported in the press, are saying that they will also withdraw their investment. Members of the public of the Hong Kong Island have told me directly that the legislature must ask the administration, how is it getting prepared for this? I have three questions, therefore, for the officials. Number one, why? Has the administration not told the public until now and educate the public that the Occupy Central campaign is against the law, that it should not be done and people should not follow the three advocates? Why did you not make it clear? Secondly, have you contacted the advocates? In order to seek an understanding and also to see how this can be averted? For example, can you not negotiate with them? Tell them to go to a park or a playground so that they can occupy some places? I think you need to do some preventive work. Have you done it? Number three. It is declared that this will take place on the 1st of July next year. Have you done any assessment of the possible scenarios so that you get prepared for the different scenarios? So that you can maintain peace in society and preserve people's freedom? Secretary for Security?
Okay, I will answer the question from Mr. Wong. If there is time, I will ask the C P to supplement. Hong Kong people live in Hong Kong society and we all know that we need to abide by the law. Hong Kong's laws, including the basic law, allow Hong Kong people the freedom to protest and march and assemble. But while they exercise their rights, we will also require all participants to abide by the laws of Hong Kong and that the public order cannot be affected, that they should do so in a lawful and orderly manner. Any action to paralyze public transport and also obstruct streets will be unlawful. It will affect social order and public safety. It will create a lot of serious effects. And if I remember correctly, this year, there was a public gathering and after that, some protesters obstructed roads and emergency vehicles were blocked and could not access the people they should help. In the circumstance, the police will act on their established practices and according to the law, they will take appropriate measures according to the situation on the ground to preserve public safety and public order. As for Mr. Wong's other questions with regard to operational details and other details, I don't think it is appropriate for us to comment on that here. Mr. Kenneth Leung, thank you, Chairman.
I also wanted to ask about pepper spray, but Mr. Shin Chung Kai already asked it. However, I'd like to ask a question which is about major principles. I have seen a film where the police have secret surveillance devices and the police officers said that it is so secret that it cannot even be approved by the legislature. If you are going to buy some new equipment, new weapon, will you come to the Finance Committee for approval? It is going to be a weapon. If you want to have funding supported, will you hide it within some larger sums? This is the first question. Secondly, reply, S P 069, which has to do with the use of video equipment and how many pictures have been taken? And you said you do not have the record. So I'd like to ask you, from 2008 to 09 and to 2012-13, I'd like to know how much has been spent on video equipment? Or is it because of security reasons you are holding the information from us?
With regard to the expenditure, it is part of our operational information and we do not have a breakdown, so I cannot provide it.
I'd like to follow up. I asked two questions. So you are saying that you will regard new equipment as part of your operational expenditure, even video recording equipment, is that right? Is that your answer, C P?
All procurement of equipment will follow government regulations. I don't want to hear the words "according to government regulations". I am asking you whether you would subsume it under operational expenditure. We have four items here. If it is about operations, then of course it is under operations. If it is about road transport, it will be under road transport, that is correct.
Next, Mr. Albert Ho. Chairman, just now the S for S and also the C P, with regard to the control of public order and the tools used, for example, pepper spray canisters, you were reluctant to tell us how many have been procured. But what if you have new tools? Will you disclose to the public? Don't buy something that people do not know what it is because the people would be affected and they would be kept in the dark. You say it is not weapons with massive destruction capacity. Let us not talk about pepper spray canisters, but what about tear gas? Have you increased the purchase of tear gas because you might think that it will be used more in the future? C P?
The police covers a wide range of duties and the control of public possessions is just part of our work. But then there are other more serious duties like, for example, investigation into serious crimes and also anti-terrorism. And therefore, the equipment has to be kept secret. But as to the expenses, they will be reflected in the relevant heads of expenditure. When you talk about heads of expenditure, do you, for example, include tear gas or rubber bullets? And also large power or large-power water jets or water hose? C P? All equipment related to operations, including manpower and equipment, will be reflected in the expenditure. Number three, in future, will you strengthen training of your manpower? Or how much resources have been put aside to upgrade training of your manpower so as to control public assemblies? You know, some people for no reason are worried, like Mr. Wong Kwok Hing. And the police are very efficient. And I would think that with regard to protests and demonstrations, if they are non-violent, then I don't think you need to use a lot of force for arrests. But you need the manpower, even if you include auxiliary police officers. Do you have a plan to increase resources to train your manpower by increasing auxiliary police officers and also regular police officers in order to tackle public order requirements in the future?
Thank you, Chairman. The police provides training to our staff. We have six P T U units under training. One more question. The last answer was not very clear. If you have to detain a large number of people, then apart from using police stations as a temporary custodial centers, would you be using other places for keeping those arrested? But that depend on the deployment. In the W T O ministerial meeting, actually, we use some other places to keep those arrested. Next question is about the Convention on Cruelty. The claimants, including those who claim to be refugees, will be given some figures from the secretary. Study from 2009 to 2012, no single claim was substantiated in up to the appealed stage. Has there been any judicial review cases so far? You're talking about those cases which were not upheld in the appeal stage. There have been some J R cases, but I haven't got the figures. Yes? Yes, we have some J R cases, but I don't have the exact figure. Please supplement in writing. But about people who are staying in Hong Kong, do you give them food stamps and also cash allowance? And now you want to cancel the cash allowance. Would these people be driven to crime? Well, actually, we have never given them cash. We give them assistance in kind. But there were traveling allowance. Well, that's on a reimbursement basis to meet actual needs. Mr. Kwoty Amau. Well, I'm a bit surprised. You are saying that pepper spray is not very powerful. It's not a very powerful weapon and now you want to withhold the figures. And now you want to withhold the figures. So have you been stockpiling the pepper spray to handle this Occupy Central campaign? And Mr. Wong says that these people are claiming or making it clear that they are going to break the law. But perhaps Mr. Wong doesn't understand what is meant by civil disobedience and also people's rights under the relevant conventions. I don't think that the government should be involved in educating the public. Outside the school, we have liberal studies. Liberal studies, we have teachers. We have the society reality to inform us. But I noticed that the secretary was reading out from a prepared text. I want to ask a question about CSB 100. A question for the Commissioner of Police. You said we shouldn't consider setting up animal police force. Why are you so resistant to this? In a civilized community, this is not something unheard of. The question is that the AFCD has no power to and the SPCA has no power to enforce the law. In one case, it took four days before they broke in to rescue the animal. There's a team, a canine unit in Mong Kok. Some animal-loving police officers would respond to calls and during other times, they would be working as just ordinary police officers. Another question is about SB 161, a question for the secretary. He said last year, 9.8 million people came to Hong Kong under the individual visa scheme on a multiple-entry visas, multiple-journey individual visa endorsement. I'm not going to ask you to restrict the number of visitors. They have been trying to buy a lot of formula products. Would you consider canceling the multiple-journey individual visa endorsement scheme? In 2000, we started this in 2009. Shenzhen residents have been arriving in larger numbers since then, holding such multiple-journey individual visa endorsements. And the number of arrivals from other sources has also increased. So the the numbers are not just about multiple-journey endorsement. Mainlands are now coming for various purposes, and that's why we have seen higher numbers of arrivals. Chairman, it seems that the individual scheme, according to the government, is is getting out of control. That's why you have been conducting assessments. If there have been no problems, there will be no need for such assessments to be made. Well, we want to make sure that the balance is not hindered. We'll look at our capacities. And if our capacities are not sufficient to take on so many visitors from the mainland and elsewhere, then we need to find ways to improve our capacities. Animal police, we believe the existing animal watch system will be more efficient in utilizing resources both in the government and outside of government. As for the suggestions to set up a dedicated animal police unit, the suggestion has been submitted to the Security Bureau for consideration. So are you saying that you are not going to do it? Well, the question has been answered. My question about North District is SB 036. We know that smuggling is very serious and it has affected the law and order situation in North District. Some people have told me that there have been conflicts between smugglers or parallel goods traders and residents. There was a report made to the police and the police said that there were insufficient manpower to handle such cases and some police officers were attacked by these parallel or gray group traders. So my question is whether more manpower will be provided to North District? And the answer is that they refer to the 999 emergency call response time. And for the north, for the anti-region, it's 99.8%. And so the response time is kept within 15 minutes. Is that good enough for you? According to North District residents, law and order situation has become a major concern. And according to the police, for the North Anti, there's been an increase of four officers and 45 for the entire police force. It's really a very paradoxical question. When you have a protest, you see many police officers. But when you try to find someone to help in an animal cruelty case, it's difficult to get a response. Why can't we, I cannot agree that you cannot get a response. As for the response time for the urban districts and NT, it's nine minutes for the former and 15 minutes for the latter for good reasons. Apart from the districts, police districts, we also have headquarters, resources and regional resources which we can deploy flexibly. When law and order situation was affected by the presence of many parallel goods traders, we deploy our people accordingly to tackle the situation. And when we receive a report, we would deal with the case fairly. Do you not think that you need to provide more police officers to North District with the increasing numbers of parallel goods traders? Well, we would pay attention to the needs of various police districts. If necessary, we redeploy people. We all know that NT is a big place in busy locations of North Districts or other locations. Do you think that the response time of 15 minutes is good enough? And then you will not try to make improvements? Well, this is not the only indicator. North District does not suffer any particularly serious crime situation vis-à-vis other districts. I have a question about SB 037, public assemblies, processions and demonstrations. I want to know the manpower and expenditure incurred. And we are told that there are 7,500 public processions and meetings in 2012 and no other figures or breakdown figures are kept. Do you have the number of working hours expended by the police? Because we want to know how the police have been handling such assemblies. We don't have such figures. Is it possible to compile such statistics? If you deploy an officer to handle, say, the procession on the 1st of July, then you must keep the figures, the statistics. You must have something to track the deployment of police officers. As regards how much information is to be kept by the police officer, would depend on whether we want to send more officers on frontline duties or in keeping statistics back in the stations. Well, we know that the police is an independent kingdom unto itself. They want to do this for North District or they want to do that for public procession. So there's no figure that we can track or monitor. Ms. Emily Lau, it's SB 024. CNE departments handling of parallel goods and also the immigration's departments handling of visitors from the mainland. There are 56 more CNED officers on non-civil service contract terms, i.e. retired officers, engaged to augment the manpower. And you have also cooperated with Shenzhen in joint operations. And the immigration department also do the same. And they have a net increase of 154 posts. And it's that the last year, in terms of mainland visitors, is staggering, a staggering figure, 34 million. And another 24% increase will be expected for this year. So it will be something like an increase of 8 million visitors. And then they are going to conduct reviews. If we have 30-odd million or 40 million visitors, how can the CNE department and the immigration department really regulate their entry? We have the secretary and the commissioners and in view of the joint operation with the mainland authorities. And we know that their culture can be quite alarming to us. So how can you make sure that our CNE department and the immigration department would remain clean? Director? Yes, we've seen an increase in the number of mainland visitors coming to Hong Kong. And 154 new posts will be created, of which 116 will be deployed to boundary control points. Apart from increasing manpower, we can also streamline our procedure. And we are also trying to allow eligible visitors to use our e-channels.
By doing so, we can speed up the clearance procedure. What about anti-corruption work? Commissioner? All our procedures within the department are subject to strict regulation and they have been vetted by the ICAC. Actually, when we had meetings with the ICAC, we were told that only a very small number of cases were related to the immigration department. And we'll keep watch of the situation. If necessary, we'll ask the ICAC to look at the procedures. What about the Commissioner of CNE? You have many joint operations with the mainland. Is there a reason for us to get worried? Thank you. Hong Kong is a free port. So if goods are exported as parallel goods, they would not break the laws of Hong Kong. But as Mr. Chan said a moment ago, starting from September last year, parallel goods export has indeed affected the border checkpoints and the use by them by Hong Kong residents. So we have to know that even if they have not broken the laws of Hong Kong, they have broken the laws of the mainland. And the mainland customs would have to enforce the law. But since there is a big people flow and also because of the manning situation of the border points on two sides of the border, the mainland needs to be assisted. And that is why we are assisting the mainland authorities. We can see that the mainland takes a serious view of the matter. And since September, we have cooperated with them and we have achieved very good results, especially at Lo Wu and Lock Ma Chau spur line. Our liaison has shown that they have reacted very quickly and also there is genuine cooperation. Therefore, I do not see that there is any reluctance. No, I'm talking about clean practices and anti-corruption practices. Well, this is exactly what I'm saying. If they are sincere in cooperating with us, if they are forthcoming, that goes to reflect whether they are concerned about the problem. Because we are talking about smuggling and avoidance of tax. I am satisfied with the situation. Mr. Gary Chan, thank you. I'd like to follow up on SB 134 and also SB 040. First of all, from the reply, I can see that from September to now, 30 operations have been conducted and 886 officers have been deployed. But in the end, you have only prosecuted 100 parallel goods traders. I'd like to ask the administration whether you have whipped up a lot of dust, but then you have achieved very little because you have only prosecuted 100 people. And I can also see that at Lo Wu, it is now a black spot for parallel goods traders. I'd like to know whether, together with other departments, you would target Lo Wu and make special strategies? Have you seen that parallel goods traders have moved to other checkpoints because you have targeted Lo Wu? This is number one. Number two, the police have given me this figure that in the past few years, the animal abuse cases have been reduced. But then, in terms of prosecution and conviction, you say they have risen. But if you look at the question itself, last year, they said that there have been 100% prosecution and conviction of animal abuse cases. I find this strange because from newspaper reports, we have seen that the police have turned away many animal abuse cases. I'd like to know why you have such impressive figures. You prosecuted 12 and you convicted 12. Is it because you have not counted in cases that you have rejected? And also, the administration, have you already responded to whether you would review the animal watch scheme? First question, Immigration Department. Thank you. Thank you for the question. We have conducted 35 windsand operations and we have arrested 886 persons. You are correct, we have prosecuted 100 persons. Why is it that we have not been able to prosecute the rest? It is because of court requirements. We might target tourists or visitors who engage in parallel goods trading. If you prosecute them for breaching the conditions of stay, you must first of all establish an employment relationship. But very often, this is very difficult vis-à-vis parallel goods trading. We can hardly find any evidence. But it doesn't mean that we think they have not broken the law. In certain circumstances, if we have reason to believe that they are actually professional parallel traders, even if we cannot prosecute them, we can reject them when they seek reentry. Starting from September last year, if we have suspected somebody to be a professional parallel traders, in fact, we have turned away 5,200 people when they wanted to enter Hong Kong again. So even if they have not been prosecuted, they cannot come into Hong Kong again within a certain period of time. We believe this is useful in combating parallel trading. As for Lo Wu and other border checkpoints, Lo Wu is still our main target. Many officers are deployed in Lo Wu. But I think you can see that the situation has become not so serious. We will study their professed target of stay. And if we suspect anything untoward happening, we will reject their application for entry. And this is very helpful in planning future windsand operations. CP? About the animal abuse reports, we always handle them objectively. Any suspected abuse cases, especially stray dogs and cats, we will refer them to the SPCA. We'll refer them to the inspectors and vets of SPCA. If they are dead already, we will refer them to AFCD for investigation. And if we know who has abused animals, we will mount a prosecution. We cooperate with the AFCD and SPCA. And I believe we have strengthened our ability to gather evidence. That is why we have a higher prosecution rate. However, the scheme has been with us only for a short time. However, the scheme has been with us only for a short time, and we'll keep the situation under watch. Mr. Tong Lee Chee, thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on a few questions. Number one, S B one-two-six. I can see that the police have engaged N C S C staff. And about fifty, which is about half, fifty of them have been engaged for five to ten years. And nine have been engaged for ten to fifteen years. It's clear that these posts are required for a long period of time. Why is it that the police department has not converted these to permanent posts? And what are these fifty-nine posts? What posts are they? C P? Most of these N C S C staff who have been engaged for a long time work in the information and technology field. All along, the government's policy is to engage these people from the market. We have been conserving resources, and we have converted contract staff into N C S C staff in order to reduce cost. And we also follow the government's policy. And we have been reducing N C N C staff numbers. As to whether these will be converted into our permanent establishment, we will take it up with other departments. This is not something the police department can decide alone. Mr. Tong Lee Chee, also, question. S B zero-one-eight. I can see that the approval, vetting, and one-way permits remain within the purview of mainland authorities. It is now a hundred-and-fifty O W Ps now, per day. And I can see that some of the quota has not been used up. And what will happen to the unused quota? This is the first question. Secondly, the vetting and approval power remains with the mainland authorities. But does the S A R G have a consensus with the mainland authorities? And that is the maximum number of hundred-and-fifty O W Ps per day? Have you talked to the mainland authorities that they should keep the numbers stable because it has something to do with our population projection? The quota of a hundred-and-fifty is something regulated by the Basic Law. The mainland authorities have agreed on that figure with the then-colonial government and also the S A R G. The hundred-and-fifty number is not counted on a daily basis. You just cannot make sure that every day you only accept one hundred-and-fifty and stop there. So we actually look at the annual figure. Many of the O W Ps are for couple reunion, and a scoring system has been implemented on the mainland. Between years, the numbers can fluctuate. And if you count previous years, you will see that the quota has not been fully used up. The mainland authorities have decided to allow so-called overaged children to come to Hong Kong. And we have liaised with the mainland that indeed unused quotas for O W Ps can be used for overage children to come to Hong Kong. I understand that forty thousand such applications have been received, and they have processed. Over thirty thousand and twenty thousand have come to Hong Kong. Mr. Fernando Jung, I'd like to ask about S B zero-zero-five, which has to do with torture claimants. In the answer, the administration said that after twenty-oh-nine, after they have had the improved approval scheme, they have still received thousands of claims. And altogether, there would be almost ten thousand such torture claims. But not even one case has been established. I understand that ever since Uncac has been extended to Hong Kong in nineteen-ninety-two, we should have received over eleven-thousand-nine-hundred such applications. And as far as I know, only one case has been established. I'd like to ask if a mechanism is used to assess thousands of applications, and yet the number of cases established is close to zero. You know, in other countries, very often, cases that have been established would be close to twenty percent. I'd like to ask you whether we should reassess the mechanism. Has the mechanism failed totally because it cannot identify who are the claimants who are genuinely subject to torture threats in their place of origin? If the mechanism has failed, then indeed, we might have affected the safety of these people, and we are not implementing the U N Convention. I'd like to ask the administration whether there will be further review. Secretary? Thank you, Chairman. We have followed a court case whereby the court decided that when the immigration department vetted the claims, they should go for a highly fair principle. And in that, it means there would have to be free legal services to be supplied by the government. And within the mechanism, the claimant will have free legal service throughout the period of claim lodging. And also, even if his claim is rejected, he can make use of a statutory channel to lodge an appeal. And we have independent appeal committees composed by retired judges and magistrates to review the entire case and the justifications advanced to decide whether the appeal is established or not.
Of course, if you have your case substantiated, it is substantiated. If not, there will also be grounds of rejection. And if the claimant is not happy about the findings of the torture claims appeal board, he can still resort to judicial review. I think he's repeating the post mechanism. We know there is an appeal mechanism, and there's a channel to lodge a J R application. The only successful case was done through judicial review. We have mechanism that is funded by public money, and we have been trying to put in place the mechanism in an attempt to comply with the U N Convention. But this mechanism is so ineffective that it cannot really differentiate whether the claimants are really subject to torture or not. Because more than ten thousand cases have been considered, and none can be substantiated. So this shows that the mechanism has completely failed. So my question is, it should be reviewed and revamped. Well, the mechanism has been set up in accordance with the court case, the court judgment. Whether a case is established or not would depend on the case itself and the grounds advanced. In March, there are five claims which have been substantiated this March. So there's a test. More than ten thousand have taken the test, and none has passed. And now, just last month, they have five people who passed the test. Mr. Court Waikang, I've got a question about S B one-four-eight and S B one-four-nine. And it is admission of talents and importation of labor under the admission of talents and professionals. We have seven thousand emissions, people emitted each year. And twenty-six thousand of imported workers, or and we're talking about professionals. And there are professionals, and therefore no training is provided. It goes against the original target, intention to provide training. Of course, you cannot provide just one training course to training up as professionals. But there must be ways for local workers to be promoted, whether we talk about carry code or other administrative or managerial posts. We should not deny them the chance of advance, to advance to professional status. So when we import professionals and admit talents, you must put in place a training for local people. Another question is about S B one-nine-one and S B one-nine-two. It's about the C N E department. I told the commissioner that there should be proper manpower arrangements to enforce the ban on formula products and to combat smuggling. Shum Chuen and Hong Kong have decided to regularize this measure. So would the officers deployed to this particular project be reassigned? And that regular manpower be deployed to this regularized operation? Director? Well, the schemes to admit professionals and talents are not to, for the purpose, are not to import low-skill workers. First of all, we'll look at whether the employers have failed to recruit these people locally, and then the professionals to be imported have skills that are not available locally. And there's an assessment panel comprising the professionals from different fields who would assist me in assessing whether such skills and professional skills are lacking in Hong Kong. So the purpose is not to replace low-skill workers in Hong Kong. As for this supplementary labor importation scheme, it's jointly operated with the Labor Department. These two schemes are different from that other labor importation scheme. We know that there are no such professionals available in Hong Kong. But what about training up local people? When our industries move to the north, move across the boundary, we, our skilled labors, our instructors would go there to train up their people. And very, after one or two or three years, they would lose their jobs. The thing is that we must make sure that the local market cannot provide the professions, the professionals. Commissioner of Customs and Excise, he has only got ten minutes, ten seconds rather. Well, the last, the previous operation was to combat on parallel traders. And the Shum Chuen Authority find it effective. And our role is mainly on intelligence gathering. Mr. Charles Mok?
I want to refer to S B one-oh-one, one-oh-two, and one-oh-four. We can look at them together. These are related to the work of the police force. I'm disappointed that the figures are not provided. I don't understand why. Well, they have failed to provide the numbers on pepper spray. Maybe there's a lack of accountants or the statistical workers. Maybe we should provide them with more workers so that they can give us the figures. I talk about the manpower, or, well, you answered the manpower of the cybersecurity center. It said that this is under the program of prevention and detection of crime, and there's no breakdown of the expenditure. Well, that can't be true. You just don't want to tell us. We want to know how the expenditure is incurred. It's a complete black hole. And in some cases, you don't even tell us the manpower. I talk about the percentage of people who need to make use of I T. Because from time to time, the funar officers are found to be involved in a loss or leakage of information. You say that the police has no information on the percentage of personnel who need to contact data or I T. That may be true. But a good management has no reason not to try to find out. So is it that you don't want to tell, or you don't know? As for S B one-oh-four and one-oh-five, I talk about the videotaping of public events such as processions and demonstrations. I want to know how many photos and how many hours of footage has been stored, and the average number of people deployed on each occasion, and the number of photo photographs and records destroyed. And the answer, the reply, is not really responding to my question. Is it because you don't have the figures, or is it that you don't want to tell us? Or you have failed to keep the statistics? All in all, well, for these three questions, I have not been able to get reasonable replies. I would like to ask the police force to supplement in writing and give us the figures. Or are you going on to say that such figures are not kept, and that's it? I would like to repeat that you should have the figures. So are you going to compile the statistics in the future for public consumption? Or due to the security reasons, you are not going to disclose such figures forever? As a matter of fact, the police haven't kept those figures. What's the last sentence? The police have not kept such figures, as a matter of fact. Are you saying that these figures should not be kept? Do you have any plans to start to compile such statistics in the future? What statistics should be kept, and to what extent have to do with resource deployment? We want to streamline our procedures and cut down on unnecessary expenditure. I still have some time. Let's just talk at leakage of information due to foxy software. Time and again, the police said you have taken action. And now I want to know the number of officers who have been trained and the percentage of officers who need to have access to such data and I T equipment. There's a need for you to know, and you should expand resources on this. And you just say no, and you have no plan to do it. Mr. Pun Shiu Ping, it's SB zero two four. Parallel traders. I asked how much manpower has been deployed to monitor and clamp down on parallel traders. I'm told that fifty-six CNED officers together with staff employed on NCSC terms have been deployed to provide support. And if necessary, the CNE department will apply for additional resources. And on the, on the police side, on the immigration department's side, in twenty thirteen and fourteen, there will be a net increase of one hundred fifty-four posts in the department, of which one hundred sixteen posts will be deployed for carrying out immigration control and related duties. For the immigration department, the new post will be a permanent post in the establishment. But for the CNE department, are you going to turn this, these posts into permanent posts in the establishment? And what do you mean by if necessary that you apply for additional resources? Thank you for giving me another chance to reply. The first part that we discussed was about parallel traders generally. Here we are talking about intelligence exchange and onsite notifications. This is in line with the approach we adopt for dealing with counterbanks and and other illegal activities in the district. So we'll continue with this. As for the export control on formula products. This is a new measures. And under this new law, Hong Kong CNE department has the power to enforce the law. We know there's a shortage of baby formula products and we had to introduce the control measures expeditiously.
We need to deploy staff with the experience to work at the border checkpoints. At that time, we did not know whether there would be any change to the number of visitors and also how parallel trading would change. So we decided to do two things. One, we would deploy staff with the relevant experience to do this. And secondly, we contacted retired CNED officers who had the same kind of experience. The member asked whether this would become a routine operation or whether this will be, these posts will become permanent posts. I think it depends on how things will develop. You can see that we have been making different law enforcement strategies and also parallel trading has taken a different form. And in fact, you can see that we have changed our strategy from working at the border checkpoint to the upstream supply chain. So we really have to come to grips with how the problem will evolve. And so we can decide on the number of officers to be deployed. And when necessary, we will try to secure the resources. Mr. Pun. Later on, the fifty-six officers will not be kept anymore. Is that right?
CNE, well, I dare not project what the future changes will be. I will just say that if we have to maintain the same kind of exit control at our border points, we have to assess our manpower level. But as to how much manpower will be needed and in what form, I cannot make a very determined judgment here.
Mr. Christopher Chung, thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on SB zero zero one and SB zero two four. In fact, the administration has not answered the questions raised by Mr. Chen Chi Chin and Mr. Pun Shiu Ping. And that is ever since you have the banning of or restriction on export of powdered formula, you have to let us know the existing situation. And now, parallel trading has different, has taken up a different form. Because they are asking anyone leaving Hong Kong to help them bring two cans over the border. And they have flouted the new control. So what kind of strategies will you take up in order to tackle the present situation? Will you also review whether your control has been effective together with other departments? This is the first question. Secondly, you have deployed fifty-six CNED officers to help the exit control. For how long will this be? Because the CE has said that there will not be a timetable to repeal the exit restriction. So does it mean that these fifty-six officers will be deployed for a protracted time? Because we are afraid that this will affect the stability of cooperation amongst departments, said the speaker.
As long as the export restriction stays, the CNED officers will act according to the law to enforce the law. As for the export restriction on powdered formula, I think the SFH has said many times and I will not repeat him. Overall speaking, the departments are having the best kind of cooperation in this. And the CNED commissioner has already said so. Ever since the export restriction, he has deployed officers and has re-engaged retired officers to do it. And they have also worked at the upstream supply train to target people who distribute the canned powdered formula to people for them to carry them over the border. Mr. Jung, you would know that in the past few days, the CNED mounted a few operations. Just yesterday, they neutralized quite a big syndicate. And they have been able to seize over a thousand cans of powdered formula valued at more than one one million dollars. And of course, people who engage in parallel trading while they visit Hong Kong, they are exploiting the visas for coming to Hong Kong. And in fact, the immigration department has turned away over five thousand such people at the border. Yes, under the law, if a person is leaving Hong Kong for the first time within twenty-four hours, he can take away two cans of powdered formula if he or she is over the age of sixteen. This is because we are giving consideration to practical situations. You can call this a restriction. You can call this a concession. Any visitor who does not flout the export restriction can certainly do this. This is what the regulation says. And the CNED and immigration department are enforcing the law. Mr. Jung. If the supply quantity of powdered formula will become stable again, will we relax the restriction? Why, I think this question is for the relevant policy bureau because we are only responsible for enforcing the law. Ms. Sit Ho, I'd like to follow up on a question. SB zero one three. Which has to do with people with different sexual orientations and whether they have got guidelines for providing services for these people internally within Hong Kong and also at the border? I'd like to ask the PS whether she has read the relevant reply before submitting it to LECCO. I understand we have submitted many questions and it's difficult for them to answer so many questions, but I hope you will do something with quality assurance. I'm saying this because in the reply, it is said that we will ensure that frontline staff are thoroughly familiar with the anti-discrimination laws. But actually, we do not have any anti-discrimination law for people with different sexual orientation or gender identities. I am precisely asking you whether guidelines, service guidelines have been drawn up. And also if yes, what was the basis for the drawing up of such service guidelines? So how can you answer me like this? There is not an anti-discrimination law for sexual orientation or gender identity. So how can you only look at gender, family status, race and sexual orientation? But these laws do not cover sexual orientation or gender identities. Therefore, even if you are familiar with these laws, you cannot draw a guideline for people with different sexual orientation or gender identities. So PS, did you do any QA before submitting the reply to LECCO? In other words, are you answering the question? Secondly, whether a reply can be given now to my question? And that is whether you have drawn up guidelines to provide a service to people of different sexual orientation or gender identities. PS. In the first paragraph of the reply, we said that we have different laws governing non-discrimination. And in the second paragraph, we have said that we have to do something to make sure that frontline staff are familiar with the law. If the law does not cover certain areas, then the reply will be that when discipline forces enforce the work, they will treat everybody in the same way regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity. Before we have any guidelines or laws for such, our discipline forces will act according to that principle. Ms. Sit Ho, everyone should be equal before the law. Everybody would agree with that principle. But then indeed, when the laws are enforced, for example, body search, if you do not have specific guidelines for people with different sexual orientation or gender identities, for example, transsexuals, then you cannot allow everybody to be equal before the law. In the second paragraph, you say your staff should be thoroughly familiar with the anti-discrimination laws. That makes me think you do not know what you are saying. Because there is no anti-discrimination law for tackling people with different sexual orientation or gender identities. I would very much like to see such a piece of legislation, but there is none at the moment. So you should make guidelines for areas where the law does not cover yet. So apart from this universal principle of everybody being equal under the law, would you draw up guidelines for these special circumstances, including the example I quoted? PS. With regard to people with different sexual orientation and their protection, the relevant policy bureau is working on this. Before a policy decision is made, the discipline forces can only act according to a universal principle. When we answered this question, of course, we knew that as yet, we do not have any anti-discrimination law to cover sexual orientation. But under our present anti-discrimination laws, there are principles which can be followed. So that even if we do not have a proper legal framework for people with different sexual orientation, we can still deal with them in an appropriate way. Ms. Elizabeth Quat.
I'd like to follow up on question SB one oh six. And that is the categorization and prosecution figures with regard to online dating. But I am actually quite disappointed that the CP says there is no particular category. But if you look at SB zero five zero, you will see that with regard to online deception, online games, online business deception and also illegal use of computer, et cetera, there are these categories. So does it mean that you think it is not important to regulate online dating and deception? Just today, there is a report in the newspapers that an underage girl may be raped. And she has been dating online and in fact, there are many other cases of the same category. And at the council, we have also made a lot of recommendations already. So if you say there is not such a category of figures kept, then we do not know about the age of the victims. We do not know about how things have developed and what the situation is like. So how can we analyze online crimes and draw up strategies to prevent them from occurring and also enforcing the law against them? My question is whether you will include such a category, and that is online frauds in relation to social networking? So we can better protect our young people so that they will not be trapped because of online social networking?
We act according to the crimes ordinance in order to keep our figures. If the crime is deception, then it will be subsumed under deception figures. But it doesn't mean that we do not keep figures for online sex crimes. For example, if you talk about compensated dating and also rape and sexual assaults arising from online social networking, we do keep figures. If you look at sexual assault cases, we can see that there is a figure cap for people who have known each other online. But you do see these figures. Now, if that's the case, after the meeting, I hope the police can give us a breakdown of such crimes relating to online social networking. I hope you can give me a table to let us know how the situation is so we can follow up. CP, can you do it? I will supply the figures. Also, I'd like to follow up in another question.
It's SB zero one eight. A question raised by Mr. Dennis Quo concerning a one-way permit. I'm concerned about single mothers who from the mainland who have children in Hong Kong. We know that there are different, there are a number of rules on the mainland for the people applying to settle in Hong Kong. We have come across many sad cases involving single mothers on the mainland who for various reasons may have divorced. Or the husbands may have been guilty of domestic violence or have passed away. And minor children in Hong Kong would need someone to take care of them. So can the government talk to the mainland authorities? So that these adults will be allowed to settle in Hong Kong to take care of their underage children? I'll ask the director to respond. Most of those one-way permit holders coming to Hong Kong are for family reunion purposes. For those who are not qualified, for example, the cases referred to by the member, we also look at them on a case-by-case basis. And we will reflect our situation to the mainland authorities. If assistance is considered warranted, we can exercise our discretion to help them. And as a matter of fact, we have assisted many people this way. Understand that assistance can be rendered on a discretionary basis. But laws should move ahead with the development of society. And many people have actually divorced. Your time is up. I don't think that you can get any answer this round. Mr. Yip Ko Him. Mr. Wong Ko Him has expressed his concern about the problems that may arise out of the Occupy Central campaign, law and order situation and the like. And then Ms. Claudia Mose tried to cross over and the problems, the problem of law-breaking activities by invoking civil disobedience. Hong Kong people enjoy freedom of speech, freedom of expression. As long as you comply with the law, even you want, you may want to conduct large-scale protests and assemblies. You can comply with the law by putting in an application. But if you want to occupy San But uh if you want to occupy Central to paralyze uh transport in Central, I believe uh there will be losses for the public. And we are also concerned that this is not going to be peaceful, although the organizers claim that it's peaceful. Because we are going to see the congregation of a large number of agitated people in an attempt to paralyze Central. And uh I believe the police would uh use the lowest possible level of force to maintain law and order. I want to follow up my question. Question two eight seven nine. A question to the secretary and uh is replied by the commissioner. You conduct uh surveys every three years. The expenditure is uh two hundred thousand dollars. In some uh protests, police officers were subject to abuse or even attack. I'm concerned about the uh harm done to police officers psychologically speaking. Do you have resources or do you provide training to police officers in helping them to cope with this psychological stress? And uh and also in the provision of counseling? Commissioner. The police uh is always prepared for all eventualities, including unexpected emergency matters. Of course, the police uh um is in the job of maintaining law and order, so we'll do what we have to do. As for the staff opinion survey, which is conducted once every three years and after a major operation, we also the conduct a session to share experience with frontline officers and to listen to uh their views. Another question is two eight, question two eight nine four. A question for the immigration department. And I'm concerned about the help assistance uh rendered to Hong Kong residents out while outside Hong Kong and the family members. Uh the number of uh assistance is quite high. Seven hundred and seventy-four cases are grouped under others in the region column. And uh what about the one thousand seven hundred and ninety-one cases? What are they mainly about? Uh director, well, Hong Kong people go to many, many places. Usually, the they may have lost their travel documents and they may have met with accidents. So these cases are mainly about the these two matters. Mister Lam Tai Fai. S B one five four is the first question I want to follow up. I uh asked a question about the measures for the non-local pregnant women. And uh it said that uh you don't have any expenditure, breakdown expenditure of the manpower and expenditure involved. I'm sort of uneasy about this, the uh reply. If you have no figures, how can you know that you have sufficient manpower and you are doing a a good job? Well, unless the commissioner is not concerned about these frontline people working for you, the immigration department and the police department are facing manpower problems. Uh look at the uh export control on powder formula. The law is so poorly drafted and the wording is so weak. And uh the C N E department end ended up with a unfair accusation against their judgment. And now you have to monitor a lot of things, pregnant, maiden, pregnant women and uh powder formula. And on top, you may have to monitor if there's anyone infected with H seven and nine trying to enter Hong Kong. If you have, if you don't have the figures, how can you uh assure our people that you have sufficient manpower? And can your staff really cope both emotionally and physically? And if they uh are forced to go on strike, then Hong Kong people will suffer. And if and if you do not do a good job, you'll be criticized, there will be complaints. How can you make sure that the extra workload is uh well-handled? And that frontline officers will not uh have their service quality affected due to work pressure? I'd like the director of immigration and the commissioner of a C N E to respond. Let me say something about manpower. The commissioner and the director will tell you about the figures and how they handle various matters such as mainland pregnant women's uh powder formula and the number of visitors. Because they adopt different approaches for different duties. And so they can deploy people to handle certain issues uh in response to the needs. The bureau fully understand the work pressure faced by frontline officers. And we have been ex- extending our support to these colleagues through various means. Uh director? I thank Mister Lem for expressing sympathy to our frontline staff. Our frontline staff are there to um enforce our immigration's laws. I can't say that the work pressure is low. But we have to do this to make sure that local pregnant women are getting the the services they need. So we deploy officers uh as appropriate. We also streamline our procedures. Chairman, he's not answering my question. You are taking on additional duties, powder formula, H seven and nine, pregnant women's. So the question is, do you have sufficient manpower to handle the additional workload? We don't want to have someone who have the virus to the to get through. Well, our manpower is deployed flexibly. Uh there's no fixed deployment as such. And we have streamlined our work. We we no longer uh use a suit, a chop. Well, we are running out of time. I have to enforce the time limit strange strangely. Mister Ng Leng Sing, I want to follow up S B zero two three. Question zero eight six three. It's a about torture claims. Torture claimants as referred to by other members. According to some member, through the mechanism, only a small number, actually one. And recently, three cases have been substantiated. If only a small number can be allowed to stay. And most of the applicants have been repatriated. I think it's good for Hong Kong. It's just what Hong Kong people would like to see. If you say that mechanism is problematic because the number that is allowed to stay is low, un- unless you can give us more evidence, then I would think that this is really an unreasonable allegation. So to those members, what number would be regarded as uh appropriate or good for Hong Kong? Are you saying that if we allow ten thousand of them to stay, that the mechanism is good? Is that really a question of judgment? And how do we assess whether the mechanism is proper? Well, we are scrutinizing the expenditure. You should ask the officials questions instead of uh putting your question to another member. I think you have misunderstood me. No, I haven't misunderstood you. You are, you have been, you have used more than a minute to talk about the the problem as you see it. I'll ask the officials to respond. We think the mechanism is effective. This mechanism is set up in accordance with a court judgment. And there's at least one appeal mechanism and our top judicial review. If it's, it has some loopholes, then we will be seeing a lot of uh successful appeal cases or even appeal cases are rejected, then judicial review cases will be successful. We have to to trust our system. We should not come up with an artificial indicator saying that it's only effective when a certain number are successful in the application. We have to act in accordance with the law instead of looking at the high or low numbers.
Mister Ng, I was saying that without a particular reason for saying that money has not been properly spent, then I would say the mechanism is okay. I think you can upgrade your answer even more. You can ask that member whether he would like to put the figure at a particular level. I was quite surprised that a member asked that question. And then I'd like to turn to S B zero three seven. We are very concerned that there are seven thousand five hundred protests or marches in Hong Kong every year. Just now, there was this hot topic of Occupy Central. We don't know whether it will come to pass, but within the banking sector, some concern has been shown. A lot of cash is stored in the central headquarters of banks. It is said that it will be nonviolent and peaceful, but who can guarantee? Who can guarantee there will be no glitches or no um riot uh so that the banks will not be affected? So we like to ask about guarantees. How can you know that you do not have to make particular strategies? But if you have to make special strategies, what are your estimates of extra manpower and equipment that will be needed? Would you like to come to the finance committee to get more funding uh so that we know how much taxpayers' money will be used to tackle this Occupy Central campaign? Secretary or C P? The police do not have the details of that operation yet. We will make all the preparation necessary, including the manpower that we can deploy and also measures and tactics that can be uh adopted. Now, of course, we hope all participants of the activity will abide by the law without affecting public order. Next member, Ma Feng Kuo. I have to be straight with the time.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up question. S B two seven two. This is about the government flying service. And also how they cooperate with uh forces outside Hong Kong and also drills that can be conducted. Now, according to the figures, I'd like to ask, when you have these joint rescue drills, who would usually initiate such operations? Is it the Hong Kong government flying service or the other party? And what objectives do you intend to achieve? Is it just for courtesy or protocol? Or do you really have a a real rescue operation when you do such drills and exercises? Can I ask the uh relevant officer to reply? Captain Michael Chan, Controller, Government Flying Service. First of all, all these drills and exercises are initiated by rescue coordination centers. For example, Guangdong Province Rescue Center or other units in Hong Kong. Their role is to coordinate all rescue resources so as to provide rescue operation in any accident or event. The G F S is a frontline rescue unit. We do not do any coordination. That's the first question. And secondly, we conduct drills and exercises with the purpose of getting to know the capacity of the coordinating unit and also all rescue units. So that if anything should happen, uh who takes the initiative? I don't want to have such a long answer. Who initiates these drills and exercises? Usually, it is a rescue coordination center. It may be the Guangdong Province Rescue Coordination Center or the Hong Kong Rescue Coordination Center. Can I follow up? I looked at the figures and it seems uh we have very few drills with the Hong Kong Garrison. It is actually zero. Why is that so? If you are looking at achieving pragmatic purposes, the Hong Kong Garrison is always here. But uh actually, you have more drills with overseas navies. Therefore, if you look at it from the point of rescue, you should actually cooperate more with the Hong Kong Garrison. So why the low figures for Hong Kong Garrison? Controller.
Thank you, Chairman. The Hong Kong Garrison has its own role. And it has its own mode of operation. We have always been in liaison with them. But as to whether they take part in any drills or exercises, it will be up to the coordination center. We are just a frontline rescue unit. We do not do any coordination. Can the bureau answer? Secretary. Chairman. If the Hong Kong Garrison proposes joint drills and exercises, we'll be very happy to join. In twenty twelve thirteen, the Hong Kong Garrison and six government departments took part in the Civil Aviation Department Search and Rescue Exercise, twenty twelve. So who initiated it? Who initiated it? Uh because the controller has already answered you. He did not answer me. Well, he said that they would not initiate it. No, I'm not asking the G F S, but also whether it was from Hong Kong. Do you have the information, secretary? I do not have the information at hand. If you have the information, after going back to your office, please answer, Mister Ma, as to who would require such drills and exercises. Anything else from you, Mister Ma? No. Mister Leng Kuo Hong.
Chairman, Mister Ma Feng Kuo is a little foolish. The Hong Kong Garrison will only listen to directions by the Central Government's Military Commission. Mister Ma, let us not waste time. Mister Leng Kuo Hong. Please ans- ask questions on the budget. I think it is insulting for him to say I'm foolish. Well, no, if you are foolish, you can be quite lovely. It is not about your integrity. Mister Leng, Mister Leng. You are foolish, but you can be lovely. I think you are lovely because you are foolish. Please ask your question. My understanding is that the Central Military Commission will be able to issue a warrant to direct any units. If you ask the civil service in Hong Kong to direct the Hong Kong Garrison to engage in a joint drill or exercise, I think you're asking for the impossible. You you are making life difficult for the civil servants. This is the first point I read. This is the first point I read from books commemorating the June fourth incident. Now, I don't know how big the Garrison in Hong Kong is. And that would apply, actually, even if you are talking about just one company. Okay, let me come back. First of all, Mister Chen Kam Lam asked Mister Zheng Wei Kang whether there is psychological counseling for police officers. Well, I have heard from police officers who are pro-democratic that they find it quite disgusting that they have to suppress the pro-democracy marches. But they could not say anything. So do you have any budget to help them or to brainwash them? Actually, I took a taxi yesterday and the driver, who was an ex-police officer, said to me that long hair, come on. Some of our officers like you, some don't. If they don't support you, they hate you. But even if they support you, they cannot help you. So do you have psychological counseling for officers who do not want to arrest pro-democracy marches? And if really they do not want to arrest the pro-democracy marches, it is difficult to direct the Hong Kong Garrison. So would you also try to deploy the military police from Guangdong Province? What are they going to do? Would you be able to also mobilize the armed police in Guangdong Province? And also, have you already made booking of Hong Kong Stadium in order to detain or hold the Occupy Central campaigners? I have heard that in Chile, they have made use of the San Diego Stadium. And number four, the acoustic damaging weapon. Will you be using that if there is the Occupy Central campaign? Will you try it out? Please, frankly. Let me take a look at it. Please do not just use it. Legislators should be able to take a look at the hearing damaging weapon. Can I please have a look first?
C P, I must clarify that when we deal with marches and demonstrations, our main duty is to maintain public order and ensure public safety. If there is anything illegal that takes place, especially violence, we will have to take decisive actions in order to retain or regain public order. So there is no question of whether police officers are happy to arrest anybody. And this has nothing to do with psychological counseling. Number two, I'd like to give you some figures. Last year, there were seven thousand five hundred demonstrations. The police made arrests only up to the figure of forty. And the majority of the arrests had nothing to do with the activities but were involved with personal behavior. For example, sexual assault and assault. And also, in fact, we made some arrests after you accused somebody of attacking you. So I don't think you should say that we have suppressed the demonstrations. No, Occupy Central is going to be peaceful. Mister Leng Kwok Hong, you have asked four questions. This is not a free fight. No, you don't have to answer the next question. People are saying that it will be an Occupy Central in peace and love campaign. And so you told me, you just told me that you would only make arrests, you would only make arrests if people break the law, for example, attacking other people and damaging property, etc. So if people occupy Central in peace and love, does it mean that you will not arrest the people there? No, I'm talking about the laws of Hong Kong. Only if people break the law.
Mister Yu Si Wing has also pressed the button. I don't think I can accommodate such requests anymore because the meeting should end at five fifty because another session will be coming along. All right, Mister Wong Yook Man? I give you five minutes and Yu Si Wing, you are given five minutes. I will be extremely strict because the next session has to start and I'm already old, I need a rest. Mister Wong Yook Man? After you have become the C P, I'm not, sorry, sorry, I did not address you, Chairman. Fat Boy Jung? Ever since Li Ke Qiang and also in twenty eleven at Admiralty, a hundred and thirty-eight people were arrested at Bank of China and ten were prosecuted. The court case is still here. You have suppressed the peaceful demonstrators. Mister Zheng, people call you a hawk, you understand? You deserve that name of being a bold eagle or a hawk. Let me not debate with you here because it's not meaningful. Hong Kong people are discerning. The loving Hong Kong power group is getting more violent. It is a challenge for you. It is a C C P unit. You say you want to preserve public order, they will be a challenge for you. It will be an exit test for you. My question is, now, it's my question. S B one two eight. I asked about that acoustic weapon. And it is a communication device and anti-riot weapon. You say it is not a weapon. But let me analyze your question for you. The long-range acoustic device, of course, it was not written by you. You say the long-range acoustic device procured by the police, we call it the acoustic gun. Now, you say it's not a weapon. You say that it is a broadcasting system, not a weapon. The maintenance and use of the equipment fall under the program of operations. No specific breakdown of the estimated expenditure in this respect is available. This happens with a lot of your expenditure item. You want to hide things from us. It's all right, never mind. This is not my point. The two L R A Ds in the Police Tactical Unit Headquarters are used in circumstances such as serious disasters, counter-terrorism operations or severe security incidents for broadcasting purposes in a noisy environment. So it is a broadcasting system. You want people to hear you, you have to use it as a loud hailer, is that right? However, look at another paragraph. According to the safety guidelines provided by the manufacturer, as the L R A D can produce significantly loud sound, any improper use of the device, that is, continuous broadcasting with maximum volume range from an unsafe distance and angle, may cause hearing impairment. So isn't this a weapon? Isn't that a weapon? And then what about the guidelines? What do you mean by a safety distance? What do you mean by a safe angle? I hope you will give us a clear guideline submitted to the security panel. Because according to your reply, this is very strange. The purpose does not fall in line with the tactic. If it is a riot, if rioters hold weapons in their hands and may hurt police officers, then you use tear gas or you can even resort to heavier weapons. So the tactic must fall in line with the purpose. But here, that is not the case. C P? Your reply is contradictory. Because according to the safety guidelines provided by the manufacturer, if you do not properly use the device, it may cause hearing impairment. I think that is your purpose. It's just like spraying pepper spray on us before violence stop plays. And then I don't even have water to wash my eyes with, so you stop the attack. Well, I can let you pass there vis-à-vis purpose and tactic. And you can see from the television footage that you are using large canisters. Leng Kwok Hong and myself have become victims. It's all right, we expected it. But here, with regard to L R A D, the tactic and the purpose do not tally. That is why the usage guidelines must be submitted to the security panel. Or else we are going to, of course, object to the budget.
Well, we're not targeting protests or demonstrators. If you look at the number of people arrested last year. Sorry, C P, please reply in writing. Mister Yu Si Wing? Reply serial number is S B one seven nine. Two questions, actually. In twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, one hundred and fifty-four new posts will be created in the Immigration Department. In these years, we have been seeing arrivals increasing by ten percent. And during peak seasons, they have been, they have been to wait for hours, two to three hours for clearance. He said, I would like to know that to what extent can the clearance time be shortened? And what kind of arrivals, increase in arrival numbers would happen this year? And in twenty ten, in July twenty ten, there's an allocation of two thousand two hundred and forty-seven point five million dollars to tie in with the introduction of electronic exit-entry permit for traveling to and from Hong Kong. What is the plan for the next step? As I've said, we have been trying to use various means to reduce manpower needs and to enhance our capacity to handle visitors. We are allowing eligible domain visitors to use our e-channels in the hope that we can save some manpower. And we do not use the chop at our control points. We've just issued a slip to the visitor to inform them of the period of stay allowed. So we have been using various means to cope with increasing number of arrivals or visitors. And we're also going to enhance our e-channels. Domain name is going to introduce the electronic exit-entry permit. There's a chip in the permit and we need to get something to read the information in the chip. And we need to upgrade our computer systems to tie in with the new permit. And we can shorten the time required for clearance a little bit. Mister Yu Si Wing? After your manpower increase, can you give us a press that the efficiency can be improved or the clearance time can be shortened to a certain extent? Well, there will be improvements, but I cannot say exactly how because it's difficult to estimate the number of visitors. We have one hundred and sixteen new posts created for our boundary control points. That's certainly going to help. We hope the manpower will be able to shorten the time required for carrying visitors. I hope your budget will not be too tight because we have a serious problem of visitors having to wait for a long time to pass our boundary control checkpoints. If you cannot improve the software in a timely manner, please enhance your hardware in the meantime. Director? We understand that there is also a similar problem in the airport. We are allowing more eligible visitors to use e-channels. More than a hundred thousand of them can use e-channels now. If they come to Hong Kong for more than three times a year, we allow them to get registered for the use of e-channels. And things have improved. We'll continue to monitor the number of visitors that we admit. And we would do other things as well to shorten the time required.